April thirteenth, regular set.
Thanks Jake, let's call this meeting to an end.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Very good, I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Motion we approve today's agenda.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Any communications, Mr. Grant?
I don't, I don't think so, no.
Alright, very good. Board?
Yes, uh, Brian Thomas, uh, contacted me regarding the land development.
Okay, potential land developer?
Yep.
Uh, I, yeah, I answered a phone call about Marysville, but I called Mike. I mean, uh, some drainage issues down there, but I called Mike, so he knows about it.
Okay, very good, thank you. And I know I have a couple of calls, I've been out of town this week visiting my son in Pittsburgh, so I'll get caught up on that. And is Andrew here?
Yeah.
To figure out how to get voicemail with the new outlook? Cause I did try to listen to two phone calls and I got nothing. So, I will be enlisting your services.
Very good.
Thank you. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda, the board cannot act on those items. But they could be topics for future board supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? See anything there? Any comments? Any comments here? Seeing none, we'll move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Motion we approve today's consent agenda.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, on to business. Item number one, this is a fairly lengthy, uh, board meeting. Appreciate everybody showing up for this. Uh, first we have a, uh, Marion County Courthouse special event application, uh, for use of the grounds around the courthouse by Karen Yoga Wellness Studio. As for the duration of the summer, May through September. Is there anybody here to speak about the application? Anybody online here to speak about the application? Jake, are you seeing anything?
Um, I don't, not on those there. Kathy Stryker is the one that, um, turned in the application, she did it last year.
As I say, we did, we did this last year as well.
Yeah, I don't know if she's talked to Chris or not.
Uh, Chris, Jason, you guys have all looked at it, no issues?
No issues at all.
Okay, board, any comments? Discussion?
None.
Alright, I would entertain a motion on this application.
Make motion we approve, uh, is it Corinne, how do you say it?
Yeah.
Corinne Yoga Wellness, for the application for the special event.
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good, thank you. Next we have, uh, Resolution twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one dash thirty, which is Iowa Department of Transit. Secondary Road Department, Jake, we do this every year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Tyler, is there anything you would like to discuss, uh, before we talk about the resolution specifically?
Yeah, so tip- typically this is a mirror image of the budget is submitted in the county's, county auditor accounting code series, the treasurer's accounting code series, just in the DOT's accounting code series. Uh, this year, uh, I omitted something from the county budget as a pat, cash flow for federal aid funding for a bridge. So, the one thing that differs, uh, I do show a revenue and expense of eight hundred thousand dollars, so a net zero change in the fund balance, uh, but we will have to do a budget amendment, uh, right away in the fiscal year to amend the county budget that's already been approved.
Okay, this is something, this is something that was not yet, uh, known as a budgeting.
Yeah, so I've since submitting the budget in January, I've completed our five-year program, moved some projects around, and as a result of that, we need the cash flow, uh, of the federal funding. Bridge, it's on a local road, I guess that's the trick, it's on a local road. Normally we cash flow through a farming market in the county, and we can't because it's not on the farming market system, so.
Very good.
So we'll make the amendment to the county budget, uh, but it's already taken care of on the DOT side. Every other line item is a mirror image of what was submitted to you in January.
So it's a net zero impact to the overall budget, but we're not going to account for it. And Jake, I know you've got that all squared away, you'll have a budget.
Well, yeah, Tyler informed us, or informed me that when he submitted this, and that we'll have to do that, um, can't, we can't, literally can't do it till after July.
Yeah, and we both, we've got a reminder to our calendar to do that, so.
Perfect.
Tyler added a reminder to my calendar.
Excellent, those are, those are cool.
Yeah.
Very good. Board, any discussion on this? Alright. If none, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
I move we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
One second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Okay, very good, thank you. We've got, uh, next we've got Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one, which is our five-year program, so Tyler, just to do, so Tyler, is there anything you'd like to add to the, uh, to the resolution?
Uh, so normally you would see a fairly lengthy presentation from me with me telling all the projects, however, uh, this year was really just a matter of moving the projects ahead a year in the program. So everything that was in year two is now in year one, we're proceeding as planned. What we have done, however, is in the latter years of the program, like in years four and five, I have shown a need, so we actually added some projects in there that we can't actually fund in the five-year program. And that was intentional, and it's actually proven to be very beneficial at the moment because there's some federal funding available that I now have programmed, that's gonna help me in a competitive application that I'm gonna turn in here in the next day or two. So, we're showing a almost fourteen million dollar need that I can't fund in years four and five for some pavement rehabilitation. Again, this is just upkeeping maintenance of our existing infrastructure. Couple things, so that, that's a, that's one topic. What I will highlight in, in FY twenty-two, we are budgeting to let a major pr- uh, bridge project, this would be the Flagler T fifteen Bridge. So between Pella and Knoxville, you're on T fifteen, um, that bridge is approaching three million dollars in today's unit prices, so we'll reevaluate at the time the design is complete, uh, because steel and concrete are on the rise right now as it's construction. So, uh, we're monitoring that. Following that T fifteen bridge replacement project, we will have a pavement rehabilitation project on our major, our, our largest corridor within the county, which is Highway T fifteen. That will include a completion from Knoxville to Pella, including Idaho Drive and everything adjacent to Pella. We have been in contact with the city of Pella and Knoxville regarding any improvements that they would like to piggyback on to the project with, for example, East Main Street in Knoxville, uh, Idaho Drive continuing on in, past Bossland and into Pella, uh, that sort of thing. So, no better time for them to get, uh, great unit prices and economies of scale uh, through a fourteen-mile, nearly three million dollar, three to four million dollar overlay project.
Very good. Thank you. Tyler, board, any questions or discussion with Tyler on this?
Hey Tyler, just for clarity, uh, this, the report itself, it has like one sixty-five, is that a hundred and sixty-five thousand? Or is that?
That's one point six five million.
Okay, that's what, that, yeah, that's what I was trying to get clarity, I was like, okay.
Thank you, Keisha.
Yeah. Uh, one other thing on the funding, I had some fairly lengthy discussions in the last couple of weeks regarding federal aid funding. So typically, we give an allocation of around four hundred and ten thousand dollars. And, and I started to question, you know, Steve and I go to CERPTO meetings, uh, quarterly to, you know, kind of check some balances to the county's allocation and city Knoxville, city Pella, ten as well. And, and I've been county engineer for almost eight years now, and our, that number hasn't moved in eight years. And we've been getting the same allocation. And so I started to question a little bit, talking with Andrew, uh, Collins at the MPO, the one MPO, about why that is. And we went through three federal transportation bills, I think, since I've been county engineer, and again, no change. But news of funding sources become available, but they're fairly competitive, we never usually have a chance of that. So our normal allocation is what it is. And four hundred thousand dollars a year, you can't do much with, to be honest. Uh, I mean, it's two hundred and fifty thousand a mile of overlay road, so you don't get very far. So, um, he, he went through some explanations, uh, about why, because I showed him the trend in our farming market, which is, leaves a similar allocation formula, but overall, the dollars coming into the state from the feds is, is not increasing like local road, or, uh, Iowa road use tax. So, um, his answer was, well, you know, population, traffic volume, all that's not really changing, the dollars coming in isn't really changing, and it's likely to go down. So, we have the unfortunate circumstance that we are close to the metro, and close to, close enough to Ames that we are in the same regional planning authority. So Story County and, and, uh, Polk County are growing and are soon to be adding more members to our transportation planning region. So Huxley and, I don't remember the name of the other town, Huxley and another are now gonna be coming online, so they'll take a portion, which means everybody's goes down. So, just something I wanted to point out, I know.
Seems like we're in a lot of those.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the demographic changes Tyler, you're talking about, not just the demographics, so if the dollar is staying constant, as you just alluded to, the project costs are going up, which means we're getting less bang for our buck over a period of years with the same allocations, right? Fair assumption?
Yes.
How do we, on these councils, make the case for Marion County relative to the growing strength of the metro area? We can't beat demographics. I mean, that, the, the population's moving, they're gaining strength. What do we have to do to make our case for not a, not a constant uh, allocation of dollars, but at least something that keeps up with, I don't know, the printing of money?
I don't know, we've had that debate multiple times in eight years I've been here. Not so much recently, but, uh, when I first came on board, I know Roger and, and other county leaders were really battling for that, and, and how do we, as like rural counties in the region, uh, keep our, here and, um, I don't know what.
But it, but it does highlight something that I think is imperative for all of us as, as residents, business owners, people who live and work in Marion County, we have to grow.
Yes.
I mean, growth isn't just directly related to overall economic health, but if we want any share of these dollars, and not just for your program, but for others, we have to grow. Money goes to where it's best treated. Maybe that's a little warped application of proper economics to the government, but that's how it works. And they're seeing bigger bang for their buck in the metro area.
Yeah, I think that formulas were based on per capita, we're pretty much handcuffed on.
Yeah.
What we.
Well, maybe that's a conversation we should have with Kelly. I mean, it's federal, but is there a way to get to have a, have a conversation?
But the allocations are set locally.
Are they set locally? They're set through these boards, correct?
And, and I will say, Mark, we are pretty fortunate in the fact that we get an allocation. A lot of other regions are competitive. Can, you can imagine what a competitive project process would be like for Marion County competing with.
Oh, yeah.
Polk, Story, and even Dallas.
And that could change too, right? But that whole, that whole structure could change as well, where we get nothing.
Right. It could, and we've had that discussion fairly recently about, uh, the DOT would really like to see all the regions have that, get, do away with the allocation formula and go to a competitive process.
Yeah, alright. Let's keep this on our, let's keep this on our radar screen though Tyler, I wanna have some discussions.
On the flip side of that, Mark, um, we haven't seen the population increase in Marion County, but our vehicle miles traveled is playing an impact, and I would say that's largely due to our, um, manufacturing. So our commuter traffic is increasing, which has changed our allocation of farming market and road use tax. And I think it was last Jan-, last June or July, when we get the final road use tax numbers for the budget year, um, I saw an increase that I wasn't expecting, and so I started asking the DOT why, just to make sure before we went and spent that money. And, uh, that, that was why. We're receiving a bigger share of the statewide allocation due to our vehicles mi- vehicle miles traveled going up. Our, our adjacent counties, Monroe, Lucas, Decatur are going down.
Appreciate that Tyler, thank you. We'll continue this discussion. Steve, Keisha, anything else for Tyler on this?
Tyler, as, as always, thank you. Thank you for putting this all together, um, appreciate it. Thank you for the clarity on the numbers.
Alright, is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion we, uh, approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Next, Marion County Secondary Road Department entrance policy, those changes.
So this is just a discussion item, again, uh, we had met one other time regarding this. So I am not formally proposing any adoption of the policy today. I still have some tweaks to make. Last time we met, I proposed the policy basically as written, as presented to you today, um, with the major change of the maintenance. The maintenance responsibility going to the property owner versus the county, and I gave you some numbers then, I still have those numbers if you're interested. Couple of questions came out of that, um, that last discussion regarding other changes in the policy, uh, around insurance being required. Currently, our policy requires, uh, construction of an entrance, either the contractor or owner constructing the entrance to provide prudent insurance. That has proven very difficult, a lot of times we're not even following up on that, so I inquired with county attorney and what other counties are doing. And what we came up with was a, um, a statement for, that they're, uh, certifying that they have insurance, they don't have to provide insurance, and then they have a whole harmless clause. That seemed to be fairly common across the counties. I will have, in office, uh, review that official language, uh, if we choose to move forward with this policy.
Would that be, would that be geared toward, if, if a, if a private person hires a contractor? Or would that be geared toward the private person itself, or both?
Both.
Okay.
Owner or contractor, I believe is how, how that's worded.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I see it now. You got it highlighted here.
One of the other changes was the permit fee. We, last time I gave you some numbers about how we could justify seventy-five dollars, ba- just based on our initial review, this was no, no maintenance cost, this is just us going out reviewing site distance and drainage and, um, and then ultimately review the final product for construction of a new entrance. Uh, we backed that down to fifty, just because we didn't want to encourage people to bypass the permitting process, um, by making it too expensive. Currently our permit's forty dollars, so proposing fifty, we can easily justify seventy-five in our time. And again, the reason for that and for the change in the maintenance responsibility, uh, from, from my perspective is, we're here to provide a high level of service and efficient use of funds for the traveling public. Entrances serve a private individual, private corporation, um, and not, there's, I think, uh, last time I gave you the numbers on like thirty percent of the surveyed counties do do it this way?
Okay.
The majority is still, the county is responsible in some fashion for maintenance, and many are still installing new entrances, so we do not currently do that and haven't, probably for close to twenty years now. Fifteen or twenty years, I think it was two thousand and six, when most of the.
My yes, number real good.
But, um, in cities, you're responsible for your infrastructure from typically the street or from the main to your household.
Right.
Same for a, a business. So, your water service, your sewer service, your, a dr- paid driveway may be required in town, and, and that's your responsibility. Uh, we have the checks and balances in our policy, in the language to address, uh, county initiated projects. If we're doing a project, we will, we will take care of, uh, the replacement. If we're doing ditching or recreating a road and changing elevations and restructuring something, we would address that. Now, if there was any modification at that time, that would be a responsibility of the property owner, similar to how we handle it now.
Have you, have we given any thought to, like, I know, you know what's happened, it's happened, it's always happened. People don't, just forget if they bypass the permit process altogether, they just put one in. Have we given any thought to, if it's non-conforming, have we given any thought to the process of how we're going to address that?
Yeah, um, we, there's a non-conforming section or clause in there, I believe.
Yeah.
I know. I, I know it's all, I know it's all words.
Enforcing it.
But it's like all of our other policies and permits and Iowa drinking law issues that we deal with, we, we don't have a lot of teeth behind it, honestly.
That's what I'm getting at. Some, somewhere, somewhere along the lines, something, an issue that has to be made an example of, if it's, if it's really horrible.
Right.
Obviously, if somebody doesn't get a permit and they just want it and it's conforming, you know, probably shouldn't have done that, but at least we don't have to take the driveway now.
I think our clause in there is sufficient for, for pertaining to entrances. I think that topic is a bigger discussion for the county as a whole regarding non-conformance to ordinances and policies in Iowa code.
I, I, I agree. I agree.
Tyler, the dollars that you have in here, uh, I just wanna make sure I understand it here. The five-year average is fifty-one thousand dollars expended, or, or, five, fifty-one thousand per year over five? Or fifty-one thousand?
Per year.
Per year over five years?
Yeah, on average.
Okay.
That's not including our labor.
And, and the six hundred labor hours per year?
Yep, so that's, so I, to me, I have that in something a little more equivalent, that's fifteen percent of one crew's time. So we have two culvert crews, if I took one of them, they would spend fifteen percent of their time working on private entrances per year.
Is there other businesses that would currently be able to do this if we were, you know, elimination? Because we all know.
There is.
And we have, we've identified some in the past, I don't.
Yeah, we have, but I just didn't know with, it's so hard to get construction people currently, um, you know, so I wondered if we were going to.
There are.
Yeah, stop or not allow, um, you know, we want economic development, we don't want this to, you know.
Right, but we currently require, installation is currently on the, on the owner, whether they hire a contractor or do it themselves. So new installation is currently their responsibility.
Right.
Then we inspect that to make sure it's compliant, then it's ours from that point forward currently. Or a culvert that's been there for fifty years is ours to maintain.
I, I never did understand why we do that, put a culvert in and have perpetual maintenance on.
Yeah, that's, it's, well, but it's.
We have talked with Monroe County, they have a similar policy, uh, they have, so that, so they are, they do not maintain entrance culverts, um, or entrances. They have had some struggles with, uh, the drainage part, uh, I think the way we have it worded, we would be able to address that as part of projects that we initiate, we would, we would take care of the culvert. We're not gonna dig and ditch up to each side of the culvert and leave it. Now, that's not why we're there, we're there to improve the drains, we would address the culvert issues at that time at our expense. Because it's in the benefit of the road at that time. If there was negligence, and we can prove that, that, that's something different. And I think now we have, we're going through the beacon, or, well, not migrating towards the beacon permitting, that's gonna create a much better data, much better database for us to, uh, do compliance checks for installation, permit acquisition, uh, as we go.
That's, that's why it would be advantageous at the homeowner, that's why the permit fee would be advantageous, because if it needs ditch, we can, you can, we can go ditch it before the culvert's installed, and it'll probably last for a long time that way. Otherwise, if they, if they don't, if they don't just put it in, then we have to come and ditch afterward, after the fact.
I, so Tyler, it's not, you know, I, I, I'm just sitting here thinking about this, I know we've talked about it in the past. And I, I think about what we say when we're, we're thinking, well, this should be on the responsibility of the property owner. If they wanna do a particular entrance to a road. And at the same time, most property owners, whether, whether in the cities or in the, uh, uh, unincorporated areas, if power companies or other line transmission companies come through, they come through and dig on their, on their land, they got adhesments or some kind of right of way. So sometimes it's a mixed metaphor to me. We say that some things, well, this should be the property owners. But yet the property owner doesn't have complete control over that four-foot span from his, from the road end, because any utility company can come through and do pretty much what they want. Um, but yet they're providing a service. So it, it, I, I struggle sometimes with saying, we, we already put a lot of burdens on property owners. It's called taxes. And when do we say our service is in? You want access to a road that you pay for, by the way, through your taxes. And we want you to come here, and we want you to build houses here and contribute to the economy, but yet your entrance is on you. And it's not, I, I, you see what, you see the dilemma, is it, it seems like depending on the entity, whether it's us, the utility companies, or somebody else, we pick and choose when the property owners have control and when they don't.
Well, if we're gonna go with that philosophy, then we gotta be willing to fund it.
Yeah, and that's what I struggle a little bit. I mean, we fund it now, right?
Somewhat.
Somewhat.
They have to put it in in the beginning, but, I mean.
But there, but there would be a way to do it collaboratively, wouldn't it Steve? Where it could be, uh, cause it goes to what you were saying, Keisha, is there somebody to come in and pick up the slack? Is there somebody to come in and do this for our county property owners, um, to come in and put in these entrances or whatever? And the permitting process, getting it to conform, make sure that the lines of sight are right, make sure there's proper safety, all those things, that's obviously something we should do regardless. To me, that's the given. The issue is, how do we get it done, and how do these, uh, unincorporated folks pay for it? When they're already sort of kind of paying for it anyway? So.
So I'll use myself as an example, you know, it has been twenty years, but I had to pay for my water to come in, I had to pay for my electric to come in. And, um, you know, I'm assuming I had to pay for the culvert, I don't remember that part, to be honest. But from the road to now the connection, they're, they're, you know, they're responsible. So like the water department, you know, if they, if they dig up in front, you know, they're gonna come fix it, but if it's on my property, I have to fix it. So I guess I have a struggle with that too, is if we've paid for, you know, they've initially paid for it, and now, you know, for the maintenance, you know? Um, I, you know, changing this would cause conflict.
So the cost is the maintenance and the installation, if that's your issue, it's not, if I want a driveway, I should be expected to pay for the pipe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So your, your, your issue then is the, the installation costs.
Right. Can we do it in a more cost-effective, efficient way in collaboration with that taxpayer than doing it some other way? Again, they're already kind of paying for the road that they want access to, and then we're saying, oh, by the way, you figure out how to get there. Oh, wait a minute, but I already paid for that. So, that, you see, but, you see my dilemma Tyler?
Yeah.
Is there a way we can do it cooperatively with the, with the landowner? And maybe it's, it's where it's a joint cost, maybe it's cost sharing, a way to defray some of those fees, you know, some of those things. If they want something unique or beyond a certain parameter, or they, you know, whatever, they want a double wide entrance instead of the standard single entrance, or whatever that is.
I will, to that point, Mark, I will say a cou- a couple of things. So I don't have strong feelings either way on this. Uh, even the, the more we dove into this, it doesn't cost us as much as I thought it did when we started this. What triggered, a couple, two or three years ago, we had a couple of fourteen, or fourteen, fifteen thousand dollar, and even a twenty-one thousand dollar entrance that we were replacing.
Yeah.
That were, we were, that was our maintenance cost.
Right.
Wow, that's massive, yeah.
So I think what we've done with this policy is we've tightened up the belt a little bit on our, the specifications and for where entrances are allowed, the number of, we were missing on this, on the number of entrances allowed per forty-acre parcel, the, um, spacing of entrances, that sort of thing, so we aren't getting as many.
Okay.
So I think that could, uh,
So you've already, you've already through policy change, you're, you're not getting called every day, hey, I want a new entrance, come out, put an entrance in.
Not yet, but as part of this, as the revisions included in this draft, that would be the case. So that would, in, in the long term, you know, that would start to limit the number of entrances and, and help us as we come upon a, a forty-acre parcel that has three or four already and no geographic features that would limit access to the parcel, we could start to say, well, is this really necessary?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and have some teeth behind it based on the fall.
And can we do something like that in that, you know, so we're not, so it's like your house entrance, you would, you know, maybe maintain, but the rest, all, you know, if it's a forty-acre plot and like you said, they had three or four, but a lot of them are just going into fields, is that?
What's the question?
Is there a give and take of, you know, some, you know, you're eliminating, you know, per, you know, the forty-acre plot? Is that what you guys all go on, is it, is it forty acres, is that, you know, so, so many per?
Thirteen hundred and twenty feet.
The spacing and so many per thirteen twenty.
Back to your, back to your thought, Mark. When you talk about they've already paid for, property taxes they pay doesn't, is not much toward the road maintenance. Most of that is from fuel tax. Am I correct, Tyler?
Yeah, so out of our operating budget, thirty percent is property tax, sixty-six percent, or sixty-seven percent is from the road use tax. So.
Not to diminish that, but.
Yeah, I, I.
So if they buy gas, didn't they pay for it?
Depends on who you are.
Correct.
If you got a driveway, wouldn't you have a road or a car?
No, well, not necessarily, not, not if it's an agricultural entrance.
Oh, okay. Kind of lost me on the, to me, that's maybe a little splitting the, the onion a little thin. Um, I, I think they pay for it regardless, they pay for it through some form of taxation, let's just say that, right? Whether it's ag, whether it's not, they pay for it someone, right? Now, maybe they don't pay as much because maybe the fuel tax rate is different than property, but whatever that formulation is. And I don't want to belabor, I just don't, I just don't want to, I, for our taxpayers, want it, it sounds like, Tyler, you've already narrowed it down anyway.
Yeah, and we.
And if you don't have any strong misgivings one way or the other, and, and you like the policy the way that it is, it's serving the public, you're dealing with safety concerns, then I, then I don't see why we would go any farther than that right now. At least, that's my opinion.
Yeah, and my second point that I never, didn't make earlier was that I was going, that the time factor proved to be bigger than the dollars. That's why, you know, my feelings weren't as strong once we got going. Would it be nice to not do it? Sure.
Sure.
Because everybody wants it right now when they call in too.
Sure.
So you always feel like you have to prioritize because, and sometimes they do, they can't get any plant or they can't get into harvest. Um, do they have the option to do it themselves? Always do.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Uh, they don't always want to, and I get that too. Uh, but, you know, the, the, the time factor was, you know, especially in years, we've had a couple of really good years here as far as the weather, so can't complain this year, but, um, you know, there are some years, I mean, it's, when we have culverts collapsing, so does everybody in their driveway. And, you know, we're trying to keep roads open, but we're trying to get people in the fields. That, that proves to be much bigger than the budget. Um, is it manageable and doable? Sure, we're doing it. Uh, would it be much easier and could fifty-one thousand dollars a year, I can replace a bridge with that, you know, for the tank car?
Sometimes, sometimes, I don't, sometimes I don't have much, uh, I don't have a lot of sympathy because some of those driveways have been that way for a long time and all of a sudden they want them now. And they could have, they could have.
Just get a little bit. Yeah, and I've struggled with that too, Steve, you know, if the maintenance was on them, then they would pay more attention to, to that. But I think part of our policy changes would help address that. We, we, we'd maybe get away from some of the, some of the deeper culverts based on site distance restrictions because we are kind of putting some more restriction on it based on site distance and safety, uh, so that could help alleviate some of the bigger, deeper, longer, more costly.
It's pretty hard to just buy a twenty-three thousand dollar culvert that gets used two or three, four times a year.
Sure, but, but you get, you get a chance to say no to that though, right? If somebody says, hey, I want to put in a twenty-thirty, thirty thousand dollar culvert, I'm going to use it four times a year, and you come in and do it for me, don't you get the opportunity to say, I don't think so, because this is what we'll put in, this is our limit? So we put in X for X, that's it.
We don't have that.
Okay.
Uh, we would, we would, if there is a better, more cost-effective, but easier, long-term maintenance option, we would always try to encourage that. Sometimes there are not, there's a clause in this policy that addresses just that. Uh, topography is usually the problem. You know, some, some parcels are so cut out with drainage ditches, a farmer has no way into this five acres then, then threw a big deep culvert. Uh, so our policy does address that. Other than, other than that one statement, we have no way to address that, Mark.
Okay.
We do not have a limitation on the cost. And you did mention that earlier and that isn't actually something I had really considered.
See, the way, the way that I would look at this, Tyler, at, at least one way I would look at it, is it becomes, here's our sta, I'm, I'm not an engineer, now forgive me, I'm going to massacre this from an engineering standpoint. But here's our standard entrance that we put in.
We have that.
It, it costs X, it takes this amount of time. If you, landowner, want the extra special version of that, the supersized version of that, you have to contribute this much money to get that done. And it can't be done today because it takes extra planning time, man-hours, and we have to account for those. That, that would seem to me to be some way around, where you get some of the cost sharing, you probably edit out some of the people who opt to it, do it now, and then you have a standard, this is your, this is your product, this is what we do. That seems reasonable and I think most people would think of that as being very reasonable.
So seriously, we would have a threshold.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that threshold would, could easily be obtained through our work order system. We can see, now here's what the typical.
Yeah.
And, and we know what the typical size culvert is, length and.
Does that make some sense though, Tyler?
Yeah. Not, not exactly something I had considered, but I, to me, that makes sense in that address of the points you made regarding, uh, you know, taxation and the burden. Um, and in the end, with our other policy changes and may possibly eliminating some of the more difficult and costly culverts, we address some of the other concerns of why we presented it the way we did, but.
So would.
I, I think we could tweak this and, something like that and revisit it.
Okay, I, I guess I would appreciate Tyler to do that and take a look if it comes back, it doesn't work, just say, hey, I looked at it, I, I did the, uh, analysis, uh, here's where I landed, okay?
Yep.
Sound fair? Thank you.
This conversation was worthwhile.
Yeah, no, I thought it.
For me, seriously.
Thanks, Steve, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and the longer, the longer we've discussed it, then, uh, I guess the, the less I want to push this because I guess I've sympathized more with property owners and, you know, we need to have some limitations, but the more we work with Missy on things and the more we tweak this policy, the more restrictions we did put in place, which I think would address a lot of the, the volume and the cost. And then if we do this, that would do that further, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate you taking a look at it, Tyler, and thinking about it in those terms and. And Steve, Keisha, any other comments on that?
No, I didn't get it.
Thank you for bringing it up again, yeah.
All right, great. With that, I would entertain a motion to close discussion on the side.
Motion to close discussion.
Second. Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi, very good. And Tyler, when you're ready, after you've looked at it, come back and put it on the agenda again. Thank you. Good discussion, or a worthwhile one, as Supervisor Combs has said. Um, we'll declare the public hearing open. Uh, we have proposed Marion County Ordinance Twenty Twenty-One dash three. And Missy, I'm not going to read that whole paragraph, so I'm going to let you, you saw the horizon.
Um, so this is parcel G in the Section Nineteen, Township Seventy-Seven, Range Twenty-One. Defined as parcel one-nine-eight-five-eight-zero-three-zero-zero-zero. This is an eleven-acre parcel that is in an area where there is already more than five splits. Um, so they're proposing to split this lot into a seven-acre tract and a three-acre tract. And because of the, uh, requirements in fifty-five-point-two-four-six, we only allow four buildable lots per forty-acre tract, it's required that they would rezone to add residential.
This is off the swan.
This is, yes, just off the swan on Drake Street.
I know.
Yep.
I think that was it. Another subtle one, yeah.
It's conforming with the land use plan that shows this as an agricultural area, conforming with the, um, current area where there's already twenty-some small parcels within a couple miles that were all done prior to the requirement to reset.
And your board recommends?
Approval, they approved it, um, on March twenty-third, two, twenty-twenty-one.
This is the public hearing portion, uh, of this. Are there any public comments on this proposed county ordinance?
I only received one comment through this process and that, uh, was the parcel owner to the east and his comment is always is, how's this going to affect my taxes? It's not going to bother his taxes, so.
Okay. Any other comments from the public, either online? Renee, are you seeing anything? Jeff? Or in the audience, here we go. We entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second. McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good, the public hearing is closed, back in regular session. Uh, for consideration is Marion County Ordinance Twenty Twenty-One dash three. Uh, this item is to approve the first reading of the ordinance, uh, proposing to amend the zoning map from agricultural A-one to A-R ag residential. Missy, anything you want to add to this item, same, same item we just discussed?
Same item as we just discussed.
Board, any discussion, questions for Missy?
No, it sounds like they covered all their bases.
Mission. All right, very good, is there a motion on?
I need a motion to approve ordinance Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty-One dash three.
First reading?
Yep.
Steve?
Second.
Very good, a motion in support, Jake?
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
First reading is approved. Next item is Twenty Twenty-One dash three, waive second and third reading and final approval, uh, of the zoning map amendments.
I move we waive the second and third reading of, uh, Marion County Ordinance Twenty Twenty-One dash three.
A second.
Motion in support, Jake?
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Very good, Missy, thank you, good night. And next we have Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash Twenty Twenty-Nine, which is approving the final plat of platin, did I not read that?
Platinum makers.
Platinum makers.
Um, so. Uh, platinum makers, it meets all the minimum requirements of Marion County subdivision ordinance. I've got all the paperwork necessary to record the document in front of me. I've been, um, in contact with Scott, Scott has looked, both parcels have the ability to have their own driveway, they have their own frontage. At this time, they are sharing a driveway. I think through the, down the road, the developer may put in separate driveways, but, and they do have the ability to have their own driveway. Uh, again, they're, meet the minimum standards of width, size, there is no concerns from environmental health as far as septic.
I was going to say in Bridget.
Yeah, they're well over the size, um, yeah, so there's no, no concerns as far as septic, so. And again, the zoning commission approved it on the twenty-third.
Remind me again, Missy, where this is at?
This is on Drake Street, just off of Highway Three Sixteen, um, Warren, Marion County Line.
South of Swan.
Yeah, that's.
Proceed with it, yeah.
Did you not add the map yet?
You can't be on that. I have a map right here.
I heard twice, but I will not pile on. All right, any discussion, board? As, as long as the neighbors have informed and no comments.
The neighbors were informed before, um, both meetings, so.
And you've got environmental sign off.
Yep.
Very good. I would entertain a motion on this resolution if there's no discussion.
Motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash Twenty-Nine.
Second. McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
On a site, huh, site plan review, river, river cabins on the east land, this is a private project. But Jim, the item Jake?
Yeah, it's difficult on the title, wasn't it, Missy? We have a picture though, Steve.
We have a picture.
We have a picture.
Steve, we have a map.
I don't know, that's a.
As we've been working on this project, um, and this all started as some concerns with septic permit or septic systems down on the river cabins, this is a long-time existing river cabin area. Um, our basic goals were, as I defined, to, um, number one, they're each been assigned an E-nine-one-one address as an identifier that identifies the lease area. The lease areas drawn in are unofficial, there has been no survey. Uh, the, all permanent property, properties are either grandfathered into, to the time that they've been there or they must meet FEMA floodplain requirements. There's currently only one, I believe, that is still working with the county engineer's office. All property wells and septic systems must meet Marion County and Iowa D and R requirements. Once the specialty, once we're through this process, they have to work with Bridget and environmental health, um, and the board of health to meet compliance with the sandpoint wells, as well as whether it's a holding tank or especially the two that are full-time living would have to have a full septic system. Uh, even with approval of this, this doesn't give them an automatic, if they don't meet those requirements put out by environmental health and the board of health, they may very well be deemed non-livable or unlivable. So we're, we're doing our best to meet those compliance requirements, or they must meet those compliance requirements. Uh, this is a very simple site plan in comparison to some, but that, that was our main goals that I just listed.
So, Missy, when you talk about meeting minimum compliance requirements, what's the, is there an annual review process to this to ensure continued satisfactory, uh, meeting those compliance requirements, or how, how's that work?
So the compliance requirements, um, will obviously be when properties transfer in the state of Iowa, time of transfer on inspection, and that, that was the biggest requirement. If we would go through another flood, um, then obviously any FEMA floodplain requirements would be required to be met if there's a rebuild, if there's any new construction, they would be required to. They did propose to add three sites, uh, fourteen, fifteen, and thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen C, which would be on the east side of Two Hundred and Sixteenth Place, uh, but all the others are existing. So essentially, once we get them into compliance, they'd have to meet the same requirements that anybody else in Marion County would have to meet. Time of transfer, septic requirements.
But it's at the time of a major, let's say, a major event?
Correct, major event, either a sale or a major event such as a flood.
All right.
We do have a current, we do currently have deadlines for them, uh, that were put into place by public health.
Correct, yep, I believe that they, the plan is that. I believe that they, the plan is that six months, I mean, once this, because what environmental health and, and public health didn't want to happen is that they would spend the money and then for some reason the special use permit or the site plan would not be approved. So that's why this became the first step of the process, but definitely not the last step of the process. So there, there are safeguards built in and public health has the authority to deem them non-livable if they don't meet the minimum requirements.
So, Missy, remind me, okay, so one person owns all of this?
One person owns all of the ground that they sit on, correct. And that is Duane Berflug.
Yep, and then the leases are going to be with, you know, the tenants with Duane. Transfer, I mean, because I know there seems to be a lot of movement, and there has in the past.
There is movement and that honestly is why, as there's movement, again, if there are septic on these, they are required, when there is a sale, to be a time of transfer. The problem we got into and why we were not getting notified in movement is that there wasn't the proper septic in place. Now, anything that is a camper and portable, they are, my understanding, will be allowed to use the onboard containment and then they would be required to pull them to the nearest dumping facility.
These are taxed as buildings on leased land, so that is another way that we should be able to have kind of checks and balances moving forward, correct?
Correct.
From a floodplain perspective, if they change their building square footage by a certain percentage or if they sustain damage of a certain percentage, even grandfathered in structures would then have to come into full compliance with FEMA regulations and Iowa floodplain management manual. I don't know that we have any annual review, Mark, or any checks and balances throughout the rest of the county here, you know, we've currently been checking in on them to make sure that the things we discussed in our initial meetings and, and when we proposed deadlines for them, we've kind of been following up to date. But moving forward, I don't know that I have any plans, just as we, you know, throughout the rest of the county, we don't go around checking to see if anyone's added on by more than twenty-five percent of the square footage. Because soon that comes through a permit for, through Missy's office for which we would then follow up.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
It, it does, Tyler.
Probably doesn't make it any better.
It doesn't, it doesn't, from this standpoint. I mean, we want people to build, we want businesses to come, we want, whether they're individuals or whether they're corporations, we want people to, to use their land, prosper and achieve great things, given whatever their vision is for their particular property. And we also want equal application of our laws and ordinances. And when this site came up, because it came to our attention, right? It was one of those things that popped on the radar screen, we put a lot of, we put a spotlight on it and we've gone through this process.
Somebody applied for, they wanted to.
It was a time of transfer on a septic, yep.
Yeah, but it's still required, it's still ratcheted up the process.
We didn't go out and look for it, they, they.
Well, we knew, we knew about it, no, 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 we knew about, we've known about this.
I think the other thing is too, in having the conversation that we've had with many of the prob, with many of the leaseholders and they're very receptive, they, they want to be allowed to stay, they're willing to, and they're working with Duane. I think they want him to, and that's why we suggested a lease, to say, yes, this is going to be, you know, we're going to give you a ten year lease, so that these people know when they're spending the money that they're going to be allowed to at least have ten years and get their money. They're all now very aware of the rules and requirements, many of them, like many others who don't, you know, build more than once in their lifetime or whatever, weren't necessarily understanding of all the requirements. They had the misconception, as many, all were grandfathered in, well, there are certain things that are not grandfathered in, as we all know, and waste is one of them.
And, and, Missy, I'm glad you raised that because that's really, Tyler, what I'm talking about is that we use the word grandfathering rather loosely.
Correct, and waste, yeah.
And we, we just, I only raise it as a point of, for us as people who go out and serve the public to ensure that we are applying, and I know, Missy, you do an excellent job, we talked about that during the review, Tyler, we do the same thing, but that we just apply things equally. When, if it, if it happens to be that the, the event occurs when there's a sale and that's the moment that we have to review stuff, okay, fine, as long as we're reviewing everybody the same way, I don't think we can go out and essentially say, okay, now that this is the standard, you all have to change. Okay? Because that can happen with federal law, Clean Water and Clean Air Act can change literally how things work. We've seen that with septic over the years. We've seen counties in Iowa get sued because of those changes. We've seen other counties fight back against it. We just have to be aware of those things and to the extent possible, make sure we're applying our laws and our ordinances consistently. And whatever that triggering event is, it is, it is what it is, we can't go out and, and redo everything every time something changes.
Let's just add, add to that, Mark, I think where you, we'll really have to be careful as a county in situations like this is it's unique in the fact that all of these can be underwater.
Yeah.
I mean, that with the flooding aspect of it, that really adds.
No, it's excellent.
A different dynamic to it.
Yeah.
I mean, when you, in the last however many years, thirty years or whatever.
Yeah, the one hundred year flood has happened how many times, Jason?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, since ninety-three, two thousand and eight, I mean, well, you have all those different vague events or whatever, then it just is hard to, and it's hard for the people that own the places to invest a lot of money in places too that there's a potential that, yeah, next year you don't know.
Right.
I will say, you know, Jeff and Ed and Missy and I were not very optimistic when we had these first conversations, that things would go as well as they did. I mean, it's been a long time coming and a difficult process for a lot of county departments to get to this point. But I will say, now, I look down through my list of, what, fifteen or twenty, and I have a handful right now that.
Or wait, not.
And they have no resistance to come into compliance. And some have met raising their buildings that they have. They're willing to put in the work, they're willing to put in on septic and all of these things.
That's great.
And, I mean, there's been some bumps in the road, no doubt, but in our, we met with these folks down there at, at their cabins, face to face, very receptive meeting. They, they understood the triggers for grandfathering, they understood the triggers for future compliance. And these cabins and, and properties mean enough to them that they, they seem to want to comply.
That's good.
I just want to point out that they, they truly, I mean, it's been a difficult process for us, but not because of those.
At the board of adjustment meeting, I, I think we had probably ninety or ninety-five percent of the people here. Bridget was, was here to assist in taking money. I think the majority of the signs, the nine-one-one signs are paid for. I, I think there is one or two properties potentially that they are just taking the building down?
Yeah, I have two pending building renewals. I have, basically I have one that has no plans for, and they need a, a floodplain permit and need to be in compliance with it, they are not grandfathered in. And then I have another pending raising the building, otherwise we're, that's it.
So it's sort of assuming that this, this would relate to any, any cabin along the river?
So all the other cabins up the river are on individual parcels and are reviewed just like any other property in Marion County, when they're sold, they're sold as a parcel, their septic's are reviewed, they're like any other parcel in Marion County.
These are across the river?
These are, these are a little bit unique in the fact.
Because they're not a parcel in themselves.
Yeah.
Which is why we couldn't require a survey, because if we're required a survey, then they could be sold for that survey. So there was, that was the reason to not require a survey be done.
What's the DNR's role in this? If somebody is not receptive, is the DNR then becoming like a regulatory?
I think the board of health has the teeth in Marion County if they're not receptive.
I think that's where this one especially is.
Yeah.
Having board of health.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
Yeah, they have the, they're, they're now, it's kind of in their, I guess, court or to the point where Bridget and Cameron are going to work on the sandpoint wells to define which wells service how many of the different units and then where the sandpoint wells and how many properties they service will then dictate how far each holding tank or septic system would have to be from each well, so.
I do think this has been a point of emphasis or an example made also for the county, because I think we've had some permits come in that otherwise probably wouldn't have. They've talked to the Navy across the river or, or down river and, and come in to see what they were going to do, so.
Good.
Kudos to you guys and your professionalism, I appreciate that and you going to the cabins and meeting with them. I think when you can, you know, physically go inside, discuss, I appreciate that.
Good job, and, yeah, I appreciate the thoughtfulness here, going through this process, very much so. Steve, anything else? Keesha, anything else? And you need a, you need approval for this, Missy?
Is this an action item?
This is an action item, so because of the special use permit, our special use permit ordinance requires you to then, the zoning commission who saw it on the twenty-third and the board of supervisors to see it, so.
Okay, so you need us to approve this site?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion on the closed site plan?
We'll make the motion to approve the site plan for the river cabin.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. All right, next we've got another site plan review.
Correct. So. Missy? You just last month approved the rezoning and phase one of the gathering grounds on twenty-one, twenty-five, Highway five, and they are very excited to move forward with, and I forwarded you guys the email yesterday. It's exciting to have them coming into Marion County and they, they're excited to be here, you know, it looks like a great project for Marion County. There's, again, they're adding, so the fifty-eight hun, fifty-eight eighty-eight square foot lodge, cellar, or sorry, celebration barn, the lodge facility is going to be about thirty-eight hundred square feet, have ten to twelve bedrooms, they're adding eighty-five additional parking spots in phase two, twenty-one of those at the celebration barn will be paved and nine will be paved at the lodge. There will be sidewalks that lead from the paved lots to the celebration barn of the lodge. There'll be an additional four ADA spots. Tyler did review this, had no concerns on the site plan. With that, the detention basins are not required, as they have an eight acre pond, which will take all, all of the runoff from their parking, from their buildings will be directed to their own pond, they have over a hundred acres. So again, in February twenty-third, the paving requirements were waived. So the nine-hundred-and-twenty-five foot driveway, it's twenty-four foot wide, will only be paved within the right of way, as required by our ordinance and the DOT. There, the property owner and contractor have been, will be required to get their N-PDS permits, they will be disturbing more than an acre total. The existing trees were shown and then we'll be adding some additional trees after the celebration barn is done. There's no setback concerns considering they rezoned forty some acres. Utilities have been verified by Iowa One Call, Mid-American, Marion County Rural Water. Security lighting will be placed on site. There may in the future be some driveway lighting. They've been instructed to make sure that all their plans, whether or not there's any sprinkle or requirements, it's not required by Marion County Ordinance, but that's upon them to check with the state.
And then Tyler, Jason, you, no issues?
No, I have no issue with it.
My only review here was to make sure they addressed drainage, not review, bringing considerations for the ordinance, which they did, and Garden Associates has the, they're signing off on that.
Just something for future thought on places like this, I mean, I'm assuming this is like a wedding venue and stuff. Though as we go through those, on a number of people, I know some cities, some counties have ordinances in regards to having so much for security at the events to reduce the chances of us being called to them. I, I don't think it has to be done now on anything, but it may be something, as you start to get hundreds of people to these establishments, it may be something we want to look at. I mean, I'm assuming they'll have like the licenses and different things as they move along or.
At this time, they're not going to, they may in the future, I'm sure they will in the future.
I just think when those, when those things, nothing now, I have no issue with it now, but as we start to think about those down the road on, I know a lot of videos do, do things like that.
No, that's a good point, Jason, I know insurance requirements for some of these places require something like that, depending on the number of people, depending on the type of insurance you have, so, but that would be something for us to.
And a lot of them do it themselves anyway.
Yeah.
I just, I, it's something that we just may want to revisit down the road on.
No, it's a good comment, thank you.
Septic design more included as well and they'll be working with Bridget and if, if necessary with the DNR, depending on.
Steve, Keesha, any discussion or comments or, Missy, on this one?
I hope we're successful.
Yeah.
Very good. So you would need an approval for the site plan from us?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the site plan for the gathering grounds, phase two.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Very good. I have number eleven, we'll declare the public hearing open, Missy, thank you very much. That wasn't so bad.
Good job, Missy, thank you.
For FY twenty-one, budget amendment number one, Mr. Randia.
So just for perspective, this is the current fiscal year we're in. I know we oftentimes bounce around in years and you did just approve the fiscal twenty-two budget.
Twenty-two.
So it's always kind of a weird time and when we're thinking about things and Michaela's just finishing up getting second half of fiscal twenty, right? We're always in three different years, the accessory auditor, trip treasurer are always in different years. So it just makes me, I always have to pause and think, what year are we in? So this is current fiscal year. Budget amendment number one, we did, we proposed this to you guys a little earlier than some years and there still may be in a budget amendment two. I know of one department for sure that may need to ask for that on an expense side, the revenue side, the revenue will be with it, but there may be a budget amendment number two coming as well. But one of the also main reasons, so we sent out the information to all departments and in your packet, you can see the few departments that did turn in some requests. Most of that was for some of the staffing changes that went between departments. So it's, it's just moving that around till it shows appropriately for where the employees are to the departments themselves, so. And then there are some components in it, on the expense side, that's what the main budgeting's amendment for is expenses. You will see that there's a little bit of revenue shown, that's for Steve in conservation, he's trying to match up his actual revenue that he's receiving to his budget itself, so we included this in to make it easier for him on his reports, so that would be the, just the revenue side, otherwise you don't usually amend for revenues. On the expense side then, we talked about the staffing swaps, there is some expenses included in there. When we did the elevator project, some of the additional stuff to the courthouse was included, just, it's appropriate time to do those expenses so that when the budget is set so far ahead, weren't included in, in the original budget. The big number in this budget is the, the bond number to pay for Prairie Ridge. So, so this budget was set prior to that project being officially approved, wasn't, you know, this wasn't a bounty to put in there. Now we have to put, being able to expand those bond money out to the city. And I'm not exactly sure if they're going to need all of that by the end of June, because this budget year ends in June, but felt it was best to just include the full number in there. It is also in next year's budget as well, depending, it's purely a budget number to allow us to expand it if needed. So in communications with the city, they do expect to have the first calling for some of this money to come back to them, to the developer, but they aren't exactly sure how much and when. So due to timing, just felt safest to throw it in to this amendment now.
I think that's the right approach, Jake.
If it doesn't get. If it doesn't get, this is a budget number. The money's not going until all the process are, are in place that were put in through the twenty eighty. And the agreements with the, with that project. But this allows us to, to make that.
Good. Excellent.
So that's, that's a broader review of what you have there. The sheet on the screen is the sheet that is summarized by service area. The major service areas that is, uh, if approved and then turned over, uh, to the department of management. Um, for official record and then the individual chart of account numbers are adjusted within our, uh, accounting software.
Great. Thank you. This is the public hearing portion of, uh, budget amendment one. Are there any comments from the public either? Here or online? Renate, have you seen anything? Nothing here. Very good. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, I missed, is that, did you?
I motion.
Yeah.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Resolution twenty one, or twenty twenty one dash twenty seven is adoption of this budget amendment. Board, are there any questions or comments for Jake or any of the amendees?
So, yeah, it's a two step process, well, three step process. The public hearing that was posted in the, you know, posted and put in the newspaper. Resolution to actually, so that, that we just approved that held the public hearing, then it's actual resolution of, of what was proposed. And then the next step, assuming this step is approved, is appropriating those expenses because. You can approve a budget, but you still have to appropriate or we can't spend it.
Right. Good. Right. Any, any comments? Kisha?
Yeah, just have a question on, um, medical examiners. We just see, and maybe Jason, I don't know if anybody knows, or, um, just an increase in overall? I mean, is that, so?
Yeah, there's, it's been a lot of, um, from, from, from coming out of that department. Autopsies, trans- transportations, um, getting more from, of, of that type of calls where the. Um, nursing homes, I guess, are transporting more than maybe they used to or, or doing it.
COVID.
And then, and then now there's, um, more, more charges along the way of the pronouncement of death and then the review of the pronouncement of death. So there's like two or three steps of charges along there.
Okay.
I don't, and autopsies, it just seems to take quite a few more too, but, um, yes, overall numbers are increasing with more charges involved.
And then last year, didn't we, we kind of set them all up for lap tops and everything, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That was for the medical examiner investigators. Um, so that was, uh, I think they all liked that and used that. Um, there is some ongoing expense with that. That's a very minor for hotspots and things of that nature, but.
Yeah. Just give me a sense, Jake, or Lisa, the HR amendment, the HR change.
Um, that was to move the administrative assistant from the board of supervisors. Um, department and then also the planning and management, the use of pop container.
Got it. Very good. Thank you. All right, Steve? All right. Very good.
I know where the other word, words are.
Okay. If there are no other discussion items, I would entertain a motion, uh, for this resolution.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty seven.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. Now Jake, we've got twenty twenty one twenty eight.
Yeah. So this is the apportionment of the expense side of the bu- of the amendment that you just, um, approved. Um, once again, I'd made an assumption and I, and I created this resolution at one hundred percent apportionment. Uh, if you do not want to, you tell me and it will be reduced by a dollar amount or percentage. Which means there, the budget is approved, we just can't spend for that amount.
Right.
Um, in amendments, historically, it's always been a hundred percent because you're only amending it because you need to.
Because you need it. Right.
Yeah.
No, I don't see anyone who's going to do that. Steve, Kisha, any discussion on this?
No, we just had the discussion.
Yes, we did. Just thought I'd ask. Thought maybe you'd want to add. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty one twenty eight.
Second.
Uh, Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Next, we have the Marion County Audit Report. This is a receive and file item. Jake?
Yeah. So Hunt and Associates completed our, um, FY twenty, um, budget. Um, that has now been submitted to the auditor of state. It's been filed online for all of our bond disclosures. Um, and it has been filed, uh, through Emma. Um. They are ready to release the statement. It was a very, in my opinion, very clean audit. You can go to the back pages to see any comments or, uh, things that were necessary to be made. The departments always provide the information that's needed. We never. We never have any issue with a, a department resisting when they ask. Cause we never know exactly what they're going to ask for, what they're going to pull, because it's random testing. Um, and, uh, it was good cooperation from, from all sides of, uh, of departments and. It was just a really good audit. There's nothing major that I, that I need to know, that I know that needs to be reported.
So we had to pay the state Iowa eight hundred and fifty dollars just to file this?
And we still have the choice of what auditor we want to use.
We do. We are, we generally do three year agreements with these, with these guys. Um, it is our choice.
Okay.
We are currently under an agreement with them at this point.
Great. Appreciate it.
Very good. Any other discussion? Steve?
No.
I can tell you have another comment.
Yeah.
I know what they are. I get the same thing. I agree. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to receive and file this audit report.
Make a motion to receive and file audit report.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have, uh, annual evaluation. Andrew Dehan, Marion County IT. And I'm assuming Andrew, you wanted it.
Oh, yes.
All right.
Let me stand right at this beautiful podium or you?
You know, I wish somebody would use it. Steve did all that.
I have been sitting for.
Right?
A while, but is it okay if I sit here?
Of course, I can't see the sheriff back there. I'm not here.
You want me to use the podium?
Sure.
All right. I will use the podium per direction.
Look at you, right?
Can you point? And that's, it's always important when you're at the podium to point, I mean, out to the crowd.
That's not proper.
Uh, it's not?
No.
I see a lot of people do it.
Point at the screen.
Point at the screen.
No, you can sit down if you want, Andrew. I don't care.
You want to stand? You sure? I would rather sit.
I don't care. Go ahead.
I did print off a couple of, uh, of updated job descriptions. Um, which you guys just. Changed in twenty nineteen, but things have slightly changed in my department from last year. All right.
I just got your message.
We can talk later.
All right. Andrew, would you like to start off? Do you have an opening statement? It seems so.
Um, what would you like to know, Mark?
Well, how do you, I mean, you've been doing this how long?
Uh, just over seven years now.
Seven years?
Mm-hmm. Crazy, right?
Yeah. Tyler, you said you've been an engineer eight?
Oh, we eight in December.
Eight. Wow.
Yeah, I've been here longer.
Jake's been here longer.
Who won't, who won't ask you, Jake, to talk about, you know?
That's good.
I've been here longer.
I'm the winner here, I think.
Our, uh, who is the longest serving county employee right now?
Steve.
Yeah, and then it was Jake, where are you at?
I'm, I'm getting close.
You gotta be somewhere right in that hole.
Yeah.
You ever done it?
I've been here longer here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Steve.
Just not.
Tim, Tim Van Rupel?
Probably not. Probably Tim. Yeah.
Yeah. Very good. So eight years, almost seven years and change.
Mm-hmm.
Good move. Glad you came.
Yeah, I think so.
Wish you could go back and do what you're doing before?
Hmm, no, that was way too much work.
That was way too much. All right. Uh, Steve, make a note of that.
Need more twenty four hour calls. I'm just kidding.
No, I mean, this, this past year, I, you know, I give you this sheet every year with my, you know, goals from the previous year. And some goals for the next year. And you'll notice the top half of the sheet this year are accomplishments that were not on my goal list from the beginning of the year last year. And I think a lot of that has to do with, um.
Some of them are lying.
Um, yeah, the, the, the items that weren't on the list before, uh, you know, it didn't really, didn't really have the, the courthouse move on there. Uh, from last year's review.
We didn't plan very well on that, did we? We just kind of prompted it. So here, here you go, Andrew.
So some things definitely jumped to the top of the list, that's for sure. Um, so yeah, if you look there, I've got a lot of items dealing with the courthouse move twice. You know, we moved everybody out of the courthouse and then over to east and back. Um, which I think was a, a, a pretty good accomplishment for, for the little downtime that we had. We only had a few scheduled downtime there. Um. Definitely spent some time working on some COVID response stuff with, um, getting offices up and running for scheduling. That was a big task and it still, still is continuing to, to be a task that we're, that I'm working on quite a bit. Now that task, that system has, has also worked very well for, uh, it, it worked well for the, the testing. But now we're also using it for vaccines as well. Um, so that really tested the system and its efficacy. And it definitely served us well there. Um, I know there was one day where our system took in seven hundred appointments in about, uh, under ten minutes. So I was worried that it was going to crash, you know, and we were watching it the whole time, but it didn't. So we're happy about that. So that system keeps serving us very well. And I know there are departments that keep using it. I know Michaela's office uses it a lot and, and recorder's office, sheriff's office uses it too. Um, and it just, it's, it's really nice. Everything I've heard from, um, different folks, you know, that I, I talked to out in the. Rattan that are really happy that they can show up for their driver's license appointment. They don't have to wait in line. And they don't have to wait for an hour or two to get, get their, served by, by their office. So. Um, I think that's working very well. Um, and a few other highlights, obviously, uh, took over GIS functions out of my department.
I'm assuming that's going to be our method of operation from now on.
For the appointment system?
The appointment system.
Well, it, it's, it's available to the offices if they want to, continue to. So I think, um. I don't know, Michaela, are you still planning on using that or?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I think it's, it's worked well. It's changed how we do business a little bit on some things, but.
Was that a collaboration between you and Michaela finding that program or was that you?
Um, yeah, we def- I brought, I definitely brought in. We started with one software and, and Michaela was definitely the guinea pig for that. Um, we found enough problems with it that we decided to go back to the drawing board and pick something else. Um, so that first software we went with only lasted maybe a month or two.
Yeah.
Um, and then we decided to go with something else, brought a few departments in because they ultimately, they're the users of it. So, uh, we interviewed this company. We, we liked what we saw. Um, we've had them, they were a kind of a startup. So we've had them make a lot of changes to their software, kind of for us, based on our recommendations and they've done that.
Makes a lot of, well, there wasn't a lot of changes based on our, how we could respond back.
Yes.
Wasn't.
Yeah, they've been very receptive to them. In fact, um, that signage, I don't know, it's. We are the, one of their only customers using that signage, uh, software up, up in the second floor now where it calls the folks into the office and lets them know. So, um, we're kind of the beta testers or guinea pigs for that and it's, it's been, been working pretty well. We've had a few bugs with it, but we're.
I did finally get it here. Michaela sent it to me.
Did you get it to work now? Yeah, we figured out we have to, we have to reboot it every day. So.
Oh, really?
We, uh, we've kind of automated that process now. So.
Okay.
And this is a really good example of where I appreciate the fact that Andrew has made me look really good. Um, when I have other treasurers call me and say, hey, I really like what you're doing. Can you tell me about it? You know, we've never seen anything like this. You know, I get the credit for that, but really it's Andrew who's done all the setup and, you know.
It's kind of nice to know.
Answer all my demands along the way.
It's kind of know, it's kind of knows, nice to know that we're kind of setting the, setting the bar for everybody.
Right. When I have the, the treasurer of Story County who's young and progressive and the treasurer of a really big county call me and say. Hey, I want to do things like you are. I feel pretty good about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Have you had him come down and tour yet?
Uh, Story County?
No, just in general. I wondered.
Oh, no, no, but I'm open to that.
Yep.
I say Q is the Andrew.
Yeah. No, and that's to you. I mean, yeah, thank you, Andrew.
Q is the Andrew of his team.
This is about you, Andrew. Sorry.
No, but he's, I mean, yeah. Your ability to be able to help and to see and to know the connections of who I need to reach out to, that's imperative. So thank you for that.
Yeah. So, so, um, like I said earlier, the GIS functions, we brought that in. Um, hired a, I feel like a pretty great staff member that's helped start bringing us up. We're, um, we made some really big leaps, uh, this past fall on, on our system. Um, now we've, we've found some, uh, significant, uh, not really significant, but. Issues that we need to work through on, on, we, we brought the system forward. Now we kind of have to bring some of the data up.
Okay.
Um, and so that's, uh, she's been working really hard getting the data up and then, so it's kind of a two step forward, one step backward, two step forward situation. So we, we made some really big leaps. Now we kind of have to bring the data with, along with it. And then now we're, we're getting close to the point where we can make a few more big steps again, which is going to be, uh, some of the fieldwork stuff. So we're looking forward to trying to get that, some of that going yet. Um, while the weather's nice and stuff, so we can start testing some of that. And we've got some projects kind of in the works there for that too. So.
How long do you think before your GIS is completely up and going and?
I mean, the GIS is, is going and functioning and running. It's, it's just a matter of.
All the capabilities.
Yes. And, and the capabilities are, are constantly changing. So, um, but. Some of the things that we saw on the roadmap that we wanted to be able to do, um, we're, we're still working towards those things. But, uh, yeah, it's definitely moving forward. We really like, like where it's going. Um, I think, I think it's, it's going very well. I feel like it's going very well.
Cause she's been here, um, Nicole's been here a little over six months, correct?
Um, yes, something like that, seven, eight months, something like that now. So.
So, but do you have a, do you have a timeline at all when you, you know, you think about where she's going to be? Where do you, where you think GIS, um, do you have a timeline, whether it's a year, do we have? You know, cause, cause we, I would like to see where we're, you know, whether it's Tyler's department or whatever. When you talk about, um, you know, when we're doing septic tanks, for instance, and going out and marking that type of thing, is that something?
We're already doing it now.
Okay. So we've got all that. Okay.
We're bringing things online, bringing features up all the time. So.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, um, it's going to be, you know, oh, we've got field apps ready to go. Now, now different departments are going to want to start using that. Well, we have to build an app for that department, we have to build an app for that department. So it's, it's bringing the system up to be able to use that. We've, we've kind of done those main big steps. Now the data's got to catch up a little bit. There's, um, we've had several different layers and things that have to get, try to combine and things like that. So, um, there's, there's definitely, it, it's, it's probably just like IT. It's a never ending process. But we're constantly trying to move it forward. Is what we're trying to do. Of course, then the next thing, uh, is we took over the website. Um, and so we're now about halfway through the redo on that. Uh, it's going very well. Um, I know, Kisha, you've been really involved with that, brought in a, we started with a, a team for that. And that, that's been very helpful for me to know what, um, offices need. Because I just, I don't know what an off. I don't know what an office particularly needs for their website. Um, and so I think the company that we went with has been very good at, um, building the site. I know Carla's very happy with them, and she's also starting to, uh, look at the, the next phase too for her stuff. Um, and I just feel like the offices have been really receptive to, uh, the website redo. Um, they're very happy, they're, they're excited to see what, you know, what it's gonna look like and things like that. And I'm happy with the company that has been chosen because they have been doing one-on-one interviews with the folks and getting to know exactly what, um, those offices really need for their site.
So, we're getting to our, getting closer to our goal, having everybody on the same website instead of having two or three different websites.
Yep, you guys asked to have everybody on the same thing. Um, I've, I told you, it's a, it's a kind of a multi-phased approach. Like I said, we're about halfway through the, the Maine County site with the, a launch date still in May for, for launching. Um, and I know Carla's already starting to work on her phase to start working on that yet, even part this fiscal year too, so. Um, that'll bring the economic site, uh, and the Red Rock area site over into the same platform. So, really excited about that. Um, and then, of course, the, the, the general contract services that I, I did with low voltage at the courthouse, we re- Uh, Steve, I know you're, you were more in, in that, we rewired basically all of second and third floors, uh, the low voltage, so the, the computers and phones and things like that, wireless access points, they all got wired into the old elevator shaft on, uh, second floor. So, that was a, a, a pretty major project, and there was some AV components to that as well with, um, uh, we did that third floor, uh, the courthouse, uh, courtroom remodel there too, so. So, those were some of the accomplishments and goals, uh, accomplishments that weren't really goals, and then you see a list of, of projects, uh, specific projects there, um, in the bottom half of the sheet.
Really quick, um, Cordova and the county park wireless projects. Um, is that so the campers can have wireless or not?
Yeah, so the, we, um, Steve Ederus came to us and said, hey, I'd like to try to do wireless for the campers at the county parks, so. Um, we said, yeah, I think we can probably try to figure something out there, don't really know a ton about it, but we'll, we'll try to figure it out. So, we, we, I, I designed something, said, let's try it, real cost-effective, I don't even think we spent a thousand dollars on it, and, uh, and put something up on the, um, the shower house and kind of broadcast it out throughout. Covers most of the park, doesn't cover every part of it, but I think it was pretty successful. Uh, and then the, uh, Cordova piece, um, that, that actually is, uh, still in the works right now. I, I said completed, but it's actually still in the works. Um, we're gonna try to beam a signal down with the same technology down from the courthouse all the way to Cordova. So, it's about seven, uh, six or seven miles. Um, but you can see, if you stand on the Cordova Tower, you can see the courthouse from there, so minus site, you know, generally works. It does, so.
I find it ironic that I'm going camping and I, I gotta have like
You gotta be able to watch those, you gotta be able to watch those races. If you, if you can't get into the racetrack
And if you're clamping, you're working and, you know, living, you know, you're transferring around.
It's, you know, it's, it's a feature they wanted, so, uh, I don't know, maybe you can charge more money now. So, we can certainly put a, a revenue thing on there if you want to charge everybody for the wifi, but.
No, I just
We can do it. His gears are turning, I can see.
You're right.
Times have changed.
So, you know, obviously, Steve's got a, a, a building, uh, that he's working on down there at Cordova, and, uh, it would be nice to go and connect those offices up to the, to the main network and stuff, so. He's got some point-to-point hardware that's not, he's only learning. We gotta find somebody to climb that tower, though, and sketch.
All right.
I don't know what else on Andrew's list there, but I just wanted to echo too, I mean, both Andrew's have been fabulous for my office over the, I mean, my eight years of the sheriff, I mean, there's been a lot of different times, whether the emergencies at two o'clock in the morning they're available, or coming out to help us, I mean, we're, we're right now undertaking body cameras, and it's something where it's like you would think the sheriff's office just takes care of body cameras, but how all of those are downloaded, how much space we need, all of those extra things that those guys have been great.
I know, every time I need them, they're out to your office.
What's that? That's, well, that may be, that may be part of it, I, I've had time to offer to put an office out there to have them even a little more accessible, but, uh, they just, I, I just can't, I just can't compliment them enough. It's added a surcharge to the sheriff's It could be, I'd probably use my share, I'll, I'll say that.
Well, certainly, the sheriff's office is, you know, it's just a large consumer of technology, right? They've got, they've got, uh, you know, tough books in their cars, they just dispatch a loan, so there's just a ton of technology in it. Uh, the jail, you know, cameras, they, they've got just a lot of technology out there.
Well, and with 15 employees, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, those, it's, it's nice to have people that are available, because then that deputy's computer goes down at 11 o'clock at night, I mean, who are we calling? I mean, we're trying to figure out how, how can we write a ticket, how can we do, I mean, have mock pulled up, how can we do those things? And so, I just, kudos. Very good, appreciate that, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Andrew, you were asking, um, for you and your staff, um, what were you asking for?
I did, I put 3% in.
Okay.
Steve, Keesha, anything else?
Yeah, and I, I want to thank you for, I know, and everybody, you know, the courthouse remodel and the move to the east elementary and back again wasn't easy for anybody. I'm just, I just appreciate everybody's working through that, and you were a big part of that.
Yep. Thanks. You stepped up, and we appreciate that.
So, I had my two cents with Andrew, you and I have had a lot of conversations over the years. At first, I'm still seven years, I think, where, where, where'd it go? Where did it go? But what I've seen, your evolution from when you started to where you are now, so this is bigger than just an annual for me. Because when you think about some of the comments, whether it's from the sheriff or from some of the folks up here, what we did during COVID, to me, that's a process where someone has grown into the job. And I think you've done that, I think you've blown into this position, where now the position doesn't define you, you define it. So, that's the biggest change I've seen in you, is too often we get into these roles and they, they're bigger than, they're bigger than us, or we think they're bigger than us, and, and it's daunting to a certain degree when you change from being in what you were doing previously, and you're coming into something like this, and you see all the needs, and you see someone, you gotta work with someone like Sandhold every day, and, and, you know, he's calling you 24/7.
Poor guy.
I mean, just, it, it, that alone right there, we should give you combat pay, just for that.
I second that.
No, but you've, you've, you've gone from that to where the challenges, the things that we've asked for, asked for as supervisors, the things that your customers, who are the sheriff, the county engineer, the treasurer, the different members of county government, you now are a contributor to that. You're a contributor to advancing what we do from a technological standpoint, and it goes far beyond technology, it's how we serve our public. It's how we do it in a better way.
I think just amazing to look back from even a year, two years ago, where we were two years ago, where we are now.
Yeah.
Just amazing.
Yeah, I mean, COVID, I mean, everybody, COVID is one, hopefully one year, right, a year in the life, where people did, I think, again, I said this from a county government perspective, people did extraordinary things during an extraordinary time. We don't want that to be the norm. Yeah, we'd like to go back to some type of normal existence, whatever that looks like.
I like what, you know, like to, to Michaela's point, that people were, people were taking notice and looking how we're operating.
Yeah.
I mean.
Good things, innovations, we'll call it that, have come out of that event, and you were the contributor to that, Andrew. I think you've helped us think through how to really make us more consumer-friendly in the midst of COVID, but now how do we go forward? And how do we do that? How do we leverage technology in a different way? And you know I've talked to you about that over the years.
It keeps my password straightened out, too.
And he does that You don't know how many texts I send to Andrew, I don't have my password, create one. So, but anyway, my
I just once every 120 days.
I'm high maintenance, I'm higher maintenance than the sheriff sometimes, I know that, um, but just
I second that also.
That surcharge is coming. But, you know, do, just an excellent job. Very proud of where you're at, very proud of what you and your department have accomplished. Um, and, uh, again, it exemplifies what we can do when we challenge ourselves, think outside the box and do those things, so. Uh, my compliments.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, so.
And in regards to your draft description, I think we will be speaking with Lisa here, you know, um,
Yeah, I've, I've given this, uh, copy of this to Lisa too, so.
Now, your next challenge is I want to know how to integrate the blockchain in county specific.
We can take
I gotta run unless you give me any
We can, we can set up a crypto payment system if you'd like.
I love, when I say that, Michaela starts to sweat.
Glad I'm not the treasurer.
What is he talking about again? So, all right, very good.
I think, I think you've done a good job.
Yep.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
So, appreciate that, um, and you put down 3%?
I did, yes.
In your budget? Um, with that, if there's anything else, Steve, Keesha, you want to add?
Rachel? Thank you.
I entertain a motion on, uh, Andrew's salary increase.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to increase Andrew and his staff for the 3%.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, very good. Andrew, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Very good. Uh, updates, Mr. McCombs?
Meet and greet at 11:00 and I'll be signing autographs.
They are open anytime, she's there, she's already up there, so anytime.
Oh, okay.
Fourth floor.
Fourth floor?
Fourth floor.
Is that the, is that the only, is that the only thing, Steve?
I see it.
Whatever Steve is, your autograph is waiting for you. Mrs. Johnner?
Um, we did have Prairie Ridge, we had a, a meeting, those are going along very well. We're up to 21 that we're looking to, either we have approved or proposing to.
So, thanks, thank you, thank you, Steve. That's fantastic. Uh, VA, uh, you know, that is the big project of the next year, and it is, uh, we're off to the races. Okay, I was gonna say unintended, but we've got a lot, we've got a calendar we're working on, Jake is helping to keep that organized and, and ongoing. Uh, we've got 2080s under review by us and the City of Knoxville, as well as urban renewal plans.
Urban renewal plan is on target for the 27th.
For the 27th?
That's, that, that should be all sched- I didn't mean to break you.
No, no, that's fine.
That should be all scheduled for the 27th, assuming, I think, the 2080 with Knoxville is the, is the big
Right.
in-between there.
So, I'll be following up with Knoxville this week on all those documents, I was out, you know, I was in Pittsburgh last several days visiting my son, so I'm gonna get my email cut up, get back in the game and, and, uh, see where we're at with that project.
One more question regarding the, uh, the 15th, I believe it is, at 2:00 is, um, bid deadline?
Yes.
And I just needed to know if that was, um, just gonna be Chris and like one of you here, or is it a
Yeah, Chris and myself.
So, do not need to post for a full meeting then, so, okay. Cause it wasn't, it was just the, the receiving and the opening section?
All it is is just received, yeah.
Okay, so, no, okay, very good.
Yep, and we'll do the formal on the 27th, I think, because we'll do it formally.
Okay.
On the 20th, my commission will meet
Yep.
for the urban renewal part portion.
Yeah, she, um, did a great job and, um, pushed that in and through and got that ahead of the, in the timeline for, for before the 27th, so.
And we are, we are also working on a, a ceremony, I believe it's going out to the media, Steve, I think you've got, uh, cause Hannah is shepherding that, and Hannah almost does an excellent job getting all that done.
Is that the 24th?
27th, I think.
Fourth.
Or whatever that Saturday is.
Seventh would be the Tuesday, yeah.
Not the right person to do that.
It's the 24th.
24th. So, 24th, we'll be having a ceremony there, what, uh, we'll call it, uh, the ministerial association is going to decommission the chapel. During that period of time, there'll be some other things that we'll have at the campus, have people, uh, residents who want to come in and take final pictures, that kind of thing, not gonna do very extensive tours just because of the branches and the buildings, as Chris has told me, uh, with the warming temperatures, we told all the contractors this who were here for the bid meeting, uh, the mold is now, uh, it's, you can't walk in the buildings, uh, without some type of respirator. So, we're not going to allow that, we even canceled the training event that we were gonna have out there for law enforcement, uh, cause it's just not safe now to go in those buildings. So, but we will have a chance for people to come out, Brian Hatch will be there at the City of Knoxville, uh, will be there as well, and, uh, yeah, hope it's just a chance to launch this project into its next phase, uh, looking forward to that. There'll be more to come on that as well. Tyler?
If you're done, I have one thing I forgot during my interview.
I am done.
We did receive 300, or we, in our April revenue tax allocation, we will see, receive 327,000 in COVID relief funding for, uh, our operational budget, 112,000 for farm-to-market. And also this week due on April 15th, I will be applying for a community project funding. App, or submitting an application for a project, OR is one of those that I mentioned as not being able to fund in the later years of our five-year program.
Now, are you gonna work with Carla on that? Cause I asked her to, to do that as well, to look at other opportunities.
So, uh, she will be giving me a letter of support, and I will be asking the one from the U of Walmart.
Okay, very good, very good, yeah, might as well take advantage of that if we can get access to it. Absolutely, good, thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Andrew, is it third or fourth floor?
Fourth. Yeah, sorry, it's